I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on January 17th, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School Performing Arts Center. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. Please, as a courtesy, silence your cell phones and stand for the pleasure of the leader. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishina'abe people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishina'abe people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian tribe have resided and have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is the roll call. Dana Cawkins, Courtney Stegman here, Jessica Turnigan, Hila Murphy here, Aleem Pango here, Tim Odeker here, Amy Bond here. Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to change or add? Okay, the Student Board of Education representative's report?
I don't believe we have a student with us this evening.
Okay, then that leads us to the superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone, and for the members of our community that are here this evening, I apologize. We're having some technical difficulty, so I won't be able to broadcast like I typically do, so I apologize for that. The first item under my report this evening is an update on COVID-19. As you know, last week, last Tuesday, we made the difficult decision to shift to virtual learning. We decided that on Wednesday, our district would be closed for illness completely, and then we would do virtual learning from January 13th through January 28th. There's a couple of different reasons for that length of time. First and foremost, when we looked at the large number of student and staff cases that we were faced with, it became very challenging for us as a COVID team to track how cases were connected to one another, and so it sort of was spiraling out of control at that point. Upon advisement from the Health Department, they believe that, Steve Hall and Dr. Jennifer Morris believe that Omicron in this community will likely peak toward the end of the month. And so we were sort of making our best guess as to how long it would take us to really push pause on the situation and return our students and staff to a safe learning environment. Right now, the plan is to return to in-person learning on Monday, January 31st. One thing that we are working on, and I don't know if we have all the details finalized, but we are currently scheduled for a Teacher Professional Development Day on Monday, February 7th. Rather than having another day off for students so soon after doing virtual learning, our plan is to shift Friday, January 28th, to a Teacher Professional Development Day, so it would not be a day for students, and then Monday, February 7th, would be a day on. So when we make a shift like that, it takes quite a bit of time for us to negotiate those changes with our unions. Linda's been working really hard on getting that finalized so that we can get word out to our families. Hopefully tomorrow, our families and our staff to let them know about that change. So, excuse me. You will see our active cases. Certainly, it's no surprise that our biggest area of concern is at Mount Pleasant High School and Mount Pleasant Middle School, our largest student populations, our populations where it's most challenging to socially distance. But our case numbers literally represent infants in our daycare all the way up through staff members that are close to retirement. It is all ages that are in part and parcel on this list. This does represent almost every case that we've investigated. Through the end of the day, there are probably a couple that I didn't catch on here because today was another very busy day with cases. Shifting to virtual learning, although it's not something that we like to do, I do believe that it's something that we continue to get better at. So last Wednesday, we began distributing Chromebooks to families and students. I'm proud to say that our technology team, which is a team of four people, were able to transition and distribute 1,400 Chromebooks to our students and families. That's pretty impressive for a 24-hour turnaround. We provided virtual schedules to students and families. On Thursday, January 13th, our food partners, SFE, did meal distribution at Mount Pleasant High School and at Ganyard Elementary. They are distributing multiple meals to each student, and they distributed over 2,100 meals on that day. We have set up future dates for actually tomorrow, January 18th, and next Tuesday, January 25th. On both of those days, our students will be able to pick up five lunches and five breakfasts for the whole week, so they'll have meals for the whole week. We've also seen a lot of really great building collaboration with our staff, looking at unique schedules that fit the needs of students so that they still include specials, they still include small group instruction, they include tutoring, they include pull-out services like Title I and special education. So they've really worked to make this as good of experience as possible, knowing that we always would prefer to have our students in person. In general, district updates for us, our team is addressing several cases with students and staff. I have to give a lot of credit to Linda and Ginger for the time that you all know I was gone. They have just been sort of testing machines, helping folks, answering questions, making phone calls. And really, all of our buildings have really stepped up and done a great job with that. We do want to continue to closely monitor cases while we're in virtual learning. We're still wrapping up cases that could have close contacts and connections from last week. And as we move forward, we want to make sure that we get timelines right moving into our return date. We are working with Central Michigan District Health Department on the new guidelines that were released from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. There are some questions about how, excuse me, how those apply to schools. I want to make sure that we have that information right so we can roll out that new guidance by January 31st when our students return. I know that we're going to get into a discussion regarding masking. There's been a lot of conversation about the kinds of masks and what kinds of masks work best. I wanted to make sure that you all knew that the district does have a large supply of KN95 masks. So any student or staff member that would like that kind of mask, we're happy to provide that to them. We'll make sure that our staff knows that. As I mentioned earlier, we are doing testing for employees right now who need to be tested. We know that it's still a bit of a challenge to find tests in our community, so we're trying to help our employees as much as possible. We are doing in some of our programs where we want our students to be able to continue with extracurriculars, we've talked about some testing to stay kinds of programs so they can still participate. And one of the things I didn't include on here is that we know that there will be a program, I believe it's sponsored through the federal government, starting on Wednesday, where you can have at-home test mail to use. We'll make sure that information is widely shared with our families. That probably is the biggest partnership that we continue to need from our families is really just reporting positive cases, letting us know when their students are sick. Hopefully, we can help them try to get the resources that they need if they aren't able to find them. That's all I planned this evening for a COVID update. I'd be happy to answer your questions if you have any. The only students that are coming to a building for learning is children of employees. We have small groups of children of employees that are in buildings so that our teachers can still be teaching. Those students are still learning virtually, but they're in a physical classroom in some of our buildings. Other questions? I don't want to jump around too much on my report, but I am going to go down to the Neola policy. Initially, when we looked at our board agenda for this evening, that policy was under New Business. That is the Miosha Emergency Temporary Standard Policy that we looked at at our last meeting. I'm sure you're all aware that the U.S. Supreme Court did put a stay on that legislation. So we do not need to act on that now. So I didn't want to remove it from the agenda without letting you know. We'll keep that in waiting in case something changes and we do need to address it. But my thought was, right now, we have more important topics to discuss than something that may or may not come to fruition. So I just wanted to add that on to let you know it's sort of been a holding pattern. If we need it, we'll bring it back, but I don't think we need to act on it this evening.
Before we move on, I'd just like to thank administrators, teachers, and staff for making such a quick transition to virtual learning. From my perspective as a parent, it's really worked out about as well as one could hope. I would like to thank the teachers, administrators, and staff for the quick transition to virtual learning. From my perspective as a parent, it's been about as good as one could hope, and I'm so glad that we have learned a lot from past experience.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jessica. I really, I think that's important that this isn't where anyone wants to be, but we have learned from our previous experiences. And every time we have this kind of experience, we do get better at it. I don't think it's anything that any of us want to be good at, but if we're going to do it, we want to do it well. So I appreciate that. And then the only other item under my report this evening is the masking discussion. I was asked by board members to add that to the agenda so that we can have a discussion regarding masking.
I sent everyone the, where the CDC and many, their names aren't coming to me. Everybody's coming now and admitting that these face masks that we're wearing right now are pretty much ineffective and not working, especially to Omicron. The only thing that does work is the N95 mask, and those need to be fitted. And if you read the CDC guidelines, if you touch it, if you touch it with, you know, with dirty hands, I mean, it's very difficult, and they're also not recommended for children. My big thing is, my big worry is these little who need the face-to-face. They need to see for developmental reasons, for learning reasons. These kids are the least likely to be affected by Omicron, least likely to transmit it. The most to have repercussions from wearing the mask. These masks don't work. If we're going to look at something that is going to work, everything I'm reading and everything I'm seeing is, it's air quality. You need to get, you know, airflow and HEPA filters. So if we want to do something positive that's going to actually work and get these masks off these kids, my suggestion is why don't we invest in HEPA filters or some kind of air? I know we have them, but I mean, if we wanted to make it even better, why don't we get these air purifiers in the rooms, in each individual room? And even if we just start with a little, which I think is the most important, I think that would be, and if you want a mask, you can still mask. I mean, I'm not saying you can't mask, but for kids or parents who don't want to mask their kids, that would be a compromise. You know, we'd have, you know, if you could get these air purifiers, these HEPA filters, which get the airflow going and keep it cleaner, you know, these kids are already washing their hands. N95s are not recommended for this age group anyway. We know these masks aren't working. That's my suggestion. I'd like to see the masks gone for everybody, but at least let's get them off a little.
Hila, what's the age group that you're kind of looking at when you say so?
At least the K through twos. And if we could do up through three through five, that would be great. I personally like to see them off of everybody, but I think it's really important educationally to get them off, you know, the K through twos. It's so important for them.
I'd like to kind of answer that. I think I'm all in favor of filters and HEPA filters and filtrators. And I think actually, I mean, that's one of the first things we did as a district. And we can get, you know, Josh back here and maybe, you know, talk more to him about this. But from my last, our last conversation with Josh, I think we were doing it in every single building as best as we could.
Correct.
And so from my perspective, I think that's very important, and we're doing as good as we can. In terms of the masking, I'm going to, I think, disagree with your wording in that, yes, N95s are best. That does not mean that a cloth mask is useless. It is not the best, yes. Surgical is better, and that is why we provide every single, like, schoolchildren when they actually walk into our buildings for having seen it. Every child that does not mask is handed a surgical mask, which is a step up. Yes, we would like even better. Ideally, if we're talking about mask quality, since we cannot fit kids with N95s, the next best is your KF94s. They are available for children, recommended by our Health Department, and are shown to work quite effectively. So if we wanted to provide something that is an option, I would be very worried to remove our mask mandate in the middle of the biggest peak we have had. Because even if we say children are less affected, even if we say, you know, they're, they don't work as much as we would like, it would allow our healthcare not to be completely flooded. And knowing that right now our healthcare is at, I mean, if we talk to anybody from my care, it's at capacity. I mean, they are bursting through the seams. That even if we just have a 5% increase in children's cases, that would be enough to put us under. And so, you know, I think at some point, we're going to have to reconsider. We have put a policy in place. We didn't say it was forever, but to remove them at the very peak would, I think, I think it would be our mistake. I also think that we are not epidemiologists. None of us are. I want epidemiologists to be the ones guiding our decisions. And for that, I would, as a board member, no matter that I'm a scientist, I would always turn to our local health officials. They are strongly recommended. We keep these masks in place. And so to me, that's where I also feel is where we need to listen. Jessica, go ahead.
Yeah, I would also push back against the idea that everybody's saying that masks or cloth masks or anything short of N95 is useless. As of the 10th of this month, the Central Michigan District Health Department is still strongly recommending masks. As of the 10th of this month, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is still strongly recommending masks, and the CDC is still making masks an element of their production. So I don't get the impression that everyone is admitting that masks don't work.
They're, they're all saying that the cloth masks are not effective against Omicron. Even the CDC has admitted that. They have come out and said, you know, they are very low effective against, especially this new variant. This new variant is so contagious, it's more contagious than measles. The only good thing about it is it is 91% less lethal. So, and for the littles, it's even worse. And we're also talking, these kids are already out of school for the next two weeks, which should be the two peak weeks. That would give us time to get more air filtration into their rooms if we so chose, which would give more protection to these kids. Again, you have to raise the risk benefit at this age group. What are we risking and what are we benefiting? I mean, their health isn't being necessarily benefited by it, but their education is definitely being challenged with it. They're losing so much that we're never going to give back to them.
I mean, I'm interested in what you're saying, and I don't entirely disagree with all the points you're making. But again, I'm going to push back against the idea that everyone is saying cloth masks are useless because...
But everyone is not saying they work either. In fact, the masks they're showing, it's not, it's the amount of time you're in a room. It's not the distance, it's not, it's the size of the room and the amount of the time you're in the room. It's how much good that mask is doing. So, you know, so if these kids are in this classroom for, you know, six hours, at what point have they lost any, I mean, the air is coming out. And if you ever worn a N95, which I know some of you are...
I'm wearing one right now.
Right, some of you are. If it's been fitted and you put it on properly for an adult, it's not fun. Okay? And all day long, it's really not fun. I know a lot of nurses, they all have to wear them, they all hate them, but understand why they need to. Now you're asking young kids who do this all day long, which at that point makes masks not really worth any of the masks that work it. They say as soon as you touch them, they're done, and then you shouldn't reuse them. And when you take them off, they're supposed to go into a brown paper bag, and you have to wash your hands before you put them on, wash your hands before you take them off. I mean, we're talking about littles. They're, you know, and then you look at the, the next thing we did was we went and looked at schools that are masking and schools that aren't masking and their percentages of COVID cases.
I'm going to comment on that because the data, while interesting, is inherently flawed because we don't, while they have maybe different rules, we are not seeing what the kids are actually doing. It's not because they have a no mandate that some of them are not wearing masks. We know they are. And so those numbers, it's really hard to make comparisons. And so I don't think we can use these kind of data accurately to make decisions. And I'm going to repeat, while I agree, I hear what you're saying, I understand that, yes, there's a cost. I think, I do think, looking at a cost benefit makes sense, right? What are they losing? What are they gaining? As a community, we have so much to lose from having littles being large vectors. They are mostly asymptomatic. They bring it straight home. And then we have all the adults that get sick, and those are the ones that populate the hospitals. So I don't think it's just the kids that we can't say, you know, that's it. And I really do think, regardless of whether we agree or not, I'm not comfortable making a conversation or discussion, I'm sorry, let me hear this, and going against our health experts, the ones that actually study this.
Yeah, and before we leave that data, I mean, I have looked at it, and I appreciate having that data compiled. I had a few observations, and again, I'm not an expert, I'm not a scientist, I'm not an epidemiologist, but these are the questions I had. And if we want to look, dig into this data deeper, I'd be happy to, like, we could ask Dr. Morris to help us through it, ask Steve Hall to help us through it. But here are my questions. Okay, so this is a comparison of, you know, COVID cases reported at schools in our area. Well, Mount Pleasant is anywhere from three to 100 times the size of the other communities on this, in this list of data. Population and population density are just not comparable. The data presented is cases relative to number of students. The case numbers are for students and staff, which I don't know how useful that is when the data is mixed. It seems to be apples and oranges.
But it was used all the way through, so in all the cases, it was used the same way.
I don't know what that means.
That means we took the number of cases that were reported.
Okay.
But the, but the number they used was the number of students because I don't think we had a total number of students and staff.
Okay, and so let me also ask, okay, how do the number of cases in these schools compare to infection rates in the surrounding communities? Have there been outbreaks in these schools, cases in which we know or suspect there was transmission in schools? That's something that so far we have mostly been able to avoid. And just myself having, again, I'm not a statistician, statistician, but if you look at the numbers relative to population size, you know, the differences that we're seeing, a lot of these schools actually are doing worse percentage-wise than we are.
You're talking about doing a population of the whole community or just, because we went just at the school level?
Yes, I understand that. I just don't know how useful that is.
Well, we are concerned here is our students, right? All right, so we're, and just because we say we don't have a mask mandate does not mean that you don't have to wear a mask, just like all of these other schools. Yes, some of them wore masks, some of them didn't. That would be the same case if we were to do it. But what we're saying is it didn't affect the percentage of students getting, so it was still, all of them were somewhere between 9 and 11%, some of them were higher, some of the masked ones were higher, some of the no-masked ones were lower.
Okay, the only other masked one is Shepherd, and you cannot compare their masking policy to our policy. They are not comparable.
Well, I'm looking more at the non-massey.
Okay.
Which a lot of them had comparable or lower than we have with no mask or no mask mandate. They're not, they're not, you can't mask. They're just saying you don't have to mask.
Well, to what, to Wilene's point, we don't know how much masking was going on in those schools, which again, makes it really hard to compare.
I mean, we're comparing apples and oranges, and it's not that it's not interesting. It's just we really can't conclude anything from this. And even if we could, I don't know, I am not comfortable going against all our health experts, even if I may not understand it, even if, you know, there are bits that, you know, I don't know. Like, I will not be comfortable going against them.
Here's my thing. We have been in this for two years now.
Yep.
Correct? Have they made any changes in two years? Two years of collected knowledge, what we've learned about this, everything. And there has not been any significant changes in the recommendation by the Health Department. And in the year 2021, nationally, more people died of COVID than did in 2020. So how does that bring about real, how does that give you faith in what they're giving us? I mean, there, obviously, what they're telling us to do is not having a significant effect on COVID.
I don't know. I don't know if anybody else wants to get in the conversation. I mean, I disagree. I think it's, yeah. Amy, Tim, do you want to join or?
I just would like to share that I would like to echo everything that the two of you have said.
Let's stay civil, please. There's a time for public comments. We'll get there. I'm getting a thumbs up on the back that you can hear me, so I'm going to go with that.
So anyway, I would like to echo what the two of you were saying, Jessica and Wilene. I am not at all educated enough in science to know what is right and what is wrong. So that is why we have dedicated folks who study these things telling us what we should and shouldn't be doing. I, you know, I, we all know that there's not necessarily great things about kids having to wear masks all day, but it's so much better than the alternative. And there's other people that we have to think about. This is a collective. So to say that we are only concerned about our students, yes, that's true, but we are concerned as a community. I mean, our students make up our community, our district makes up our community. So to not, not truly listen to the experts in this situation, I think would just be negligence on our part. And I think that it's very important for us to keep our mask mandate. I also think that this is a point that it's a discussion that, right now, we're not even able to have in-person learning because the spread was so extreme. And so I think that there needs to be consideration of, while this is an important conversation, there's also other barriers to our kids actually fully learning and being in the classroom and in the space that our parents want them to be in. So I fully support us keeping masks. I think it's very important.
I'd like to say that I'm glad we're having this conversation. As Sheila said, it's been almost two years that we've had this policy-ish in place, a year and a half or so. So I think, oh, actually, we initiated this at the beginning of this year to have a review done of our policy. At that time, we had said that we're trying to base it on the information that we had before us. And Sheila, you're very correct, because things have changed in those past period of time. More information and a new form of the virus has actually come out. More information and a new form of the virus has actually come out. I do think it's interesting with your concept of modifying the policy to mandate the kind of mask that maybe that we should be looking at. You know, should we ban the turtles or the, you know, the thinner cloth ones in the school buildings? Or should we say, has to be some kind of a surgical grade or above mask in the buildings? You know, it's interesting, I think, it's fair to say that up to this point, the district has not had much infection rate within the buildings. So something's working, whether it's the HEPA filters that we have in our rooms, and maybe that's enough air circulation. And it's just recently with the Omicron that we seem to have kind of lost control. But it's also hard for us to determine, is that within the buildings or outside coming in? Because it's been a tidal wave of infections more than it has been a slow manageable component to it. You know, and that's an interesting idea. Should we, since we have the N, KN95s, you know, should we have those available for the kids? And either encourage them or make the expectation that you have to have a surgical-grade mask or above during the day? That that's, Sheila, the information that you shared, that seems to be the evidence.
No, that's not what Sheila was saying, but...
The evidence seems to be saying that you need to have a higher grade to... With Omicron, because you need to, whatever is the, how it functions, it's so infectious that it's going through the cloth mask or whatever the process has been for that infection. So, I mean, that is something that I think maybe would mirror a conversation.
I think before you do that, you need to read the CDC guidelines for the use of the N95s and N94s and think if that's realistic for young age groups. Because I don't think it is. I don't think it's a realistic guideline that these kids would be able to put it on properly, fit it properly, take it off properly. I mean, and if you don't do any of it the right way, then you aren't getting any of the benefits from it.
But I think that's, you know, it is being airborne. And I think trying to limit that, either expelling it into the air or catching it from the air, where, you know, whether students touching their face or not, yes, you can get anything by catching it and putting it in your face, putting it in your eyes, licking it, licking your spoon that was on the tabletop. But it sounds like that is not the predominant way for transfer. So you're trying to limit air expulsion into the air, right? The aeration into the air as much as possible. And from what I understand, it's how it is traveled into the air, whether it's on spittle or seeds or snot or, right, all those different things that you have to look at. You know, but, you know, if we are in this environment and if we get another variation that's just as contagious as Omicron, but going back to the Delta in its locality or it shifts down to the small children, right? We're already noticing that this thing, viruses modify, and in general. And so I think we need to be thinking through that as a policy because it starts to shift and we start to get a lot of children in hospitalization or fatalities all of a sudden. We'll know that there's the Zeta version of this out there that we need to be protecting from. I don't know if I necessarily agree that it hasn't had, not been effective. I think in our buildings, in our district, I think the low level of transmission, even the low level of actual childhood illness, I think it's hard to say that all of these factors that we've built into place, hand cleaning, the air filtration systems, masking, the whole myriad of things that we talked about when we created the policy, haven't worked because there's some evidence that something has worked, whether one or in the partnership with all of the other things that we're trying to do. With the illness currently being so high, I think it would be not the most appropriate thing to roll back the mask mandate at this time. You know, we are struggling as it is. And so I think it would not be appropriate to test that theory to see what would happen if we did do that. I happen to agree that it's sometimes difficult to make comparisons with us running districts because they're not necessarily like us in many ways. And in many ways that they are. I know that Shepherd's closed, and Sacred Heart's closed. They're going virtual. And so the infection rate seems to be there also. So at this time, I think it's, you know, a valid conversation. I think it's something that we should learn more about. So some questions, Jen, how many KN95 masks do we have? If they came back from the two weeks, do we have them to offer? How, I've heard about the fitting. I just don't know anything about that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I went right on the CDC website to find out. You know, I'm not coming here without having done some research.
Right, well, and that's what we have administration for.
I've been reading, I've been looking. I am not professing to be, but I am listening to people who are.
Oh, you've been providing great information to everybody. I think, and I appreciate that.
Well, I just want to clarify. We do not have N95 masks. Those masks are personally fitted.
Correct.
We have KN95 masks. So there are different sizes of masks, but it is not a custom personalized fit. So it is a better grade of mask than a cloth mask or a surgical mask, but it is not the level of the N95. MDHHS did put out a continuum of masks and their effectiveness. It's a graphic. I can get that and share that with you all this evening so you can see that. And it shows that, what you're saying, Sheila, I mean, the N95s are the most effective down to a cloth mask and kind of everything in between. But in answer to your question, Tim, we do have thousands of the KN95. We were given a pallet of them. And quite frankly, I think Sheila also alluded to this. They're not the most comfortable mask. So as we've distributed masks, they've not been the most popular with our staff or students. But we have them and would be happy to roll them out on January 31st.
For myself, I think at this point, I would really love to see the kids get back into the classroom first. I'd be happy to reopen this conversation. And, you know, I think some modifications as we are continuing to look at things. You know, we might want to make modifications, but with that and students not being in the classroom right now, I personally feel like I would like to see the numbers come down a little bit, that we can actually have kids in the classroom. We can have a staff remain in the classroom. We know how trying it's been for staff to have to sub into other rooms if they've even been able to. I know that's part of the other reason is we are still low on subs within this district. So any illness or anything that takes staff out of the buildings is continually hard. And so because of that, I would really like to kind of see us hit that peak and then be able to come back from it. And then, you know, and as we know too, numbers have a tendency to go down as the weather warms up. We are in the coldest part of our year right now. And this is a time that in years past, even before COVID, we've always had the flu, we've had strep, we've had bronchitis, we've had illness left and right that have had days that have counted that we haven't been able to count. And that was all even before COVID. So COVID on top of that, that's kind of where I'm thinking right now. I don't think it's not a conversation to have. I just, I think it might be a conversation to have after we're back in the classrooms and we have enough staff in the building to cover the actual classrooms that we have.
Something else I'd like to know too is how many people, total staff and students have actually had COVID at this point? Because that is, at least there's some natural immunity. It tends to lower the spread. And I think we should take that into account. If 50% of our, you know, our student and staff population have already had it, especially at the lower levels, then I think that should be taken into, you know, consideration that, you know, they've already had it. Their chances of getting it or spreading it is next to nothing for at least, you know, three to six months. And I think that should be taken into consideration as well.
So we do have the running total of all of our cases posted on our website.
Mm-hmm.
It's not broken down though by 90.
Last time, yeah. Last time I looked, it was still under 20%. But then how many are unreported?
Well, right.
Which would be, you know, a really interesting thing. I would really like to, you know, like to see our Health Department actually find out, you know, how many people have actually had it.
Yeah. I know that they are struggling staff-wise just as much as the rest of us, and they are feeling as overwhelmed as... So I don't, to try to determine who's had it and hasn't been tested, I'm sure there's, you know, something they could do research-wise, but that might be more of a statewide figure.
Yeah, I was going to say. I just think it, at some point, those information... I also think that it's interesting that the, you know, State Board of Education refused to mandate masks at their meeting.
Is that what happened? Or did they not, agreed to not ask the legislature to pass the law to do that?
And the State Board doesn't have the authority to do that.
Mm-mm, no.
You know, another interesting question would be whether it is our vaccination rate in the students that would be parallel with those who had it, right? Because it would be...
Yeah, you need to add the two of them together, yeah.
Two of them together. And, you know, do we have any, have we surveyed? That's pretty much the only method.
I don't think you can technically ask that. You don't have...
So we can ask if a student has tested positive or if they've been exposed, but then it's up to the family if they want to provide that information to us or not.
I don't think you can ask them their vaccination status.
Only if they've tested positive or if they've been exposed. But they don't have to answer that.
Because I don't, and I don't, last I heard, it was in the 20s, 30% for like a county-wide. And so extrapolating that there's only about 20 or 30% of the students in the building since we're a good chunk of a county is really the only thing that I have seen. But going back to what Sheila said, that's a really good thought is, you know, what is a vaccination rate? What is the, naturally, I mean, there's lots of different ways.
Except they're showing that the vaccinations do not work against Omicron. I mean, that's the study out of, it might lessen, but it does not work against Omicron. I mean, that study came out of South Africa where the...
But it's showing the Delta, which in theory is still around, right?
Correct. But Omicron should be pushing that out because it's so contagious. That's the thought.
And I don't even know, if you get Omicron, does that mean you can't get Delta?
Correct. At this point, from what they've seen out of South Africa, it is showing that if you've had Omicron, it does protect you against the previous variant. But the previous variants do not protect you against Omicron, which I thought was really interesting. And that's out of, that's out of South Africa. UK is also doing a study on it, but they haven't come out with it yet.
And because all those things are valid pieces of valuable, important information if we have a conversation about it, right? If we find that, you know, 80% of the population is either vaccinated or has had it, that's leaving 20%, you know, that could have a large impact. It's like, we're 100% vaccinated, right? That would have an impact on our decision on whether we continue masks or not if we went vaccinated. So all those are key pieces of information that could be helpful as the conversation goes forward.
I was going to say, the last I heard, it's not if, it's when you're going to get Omicron. As they said, it is that...
Contagious.
Contagious. But it is a bad cold for most people, not everyone. And you need to know, you know, that's your personal thing. But majority of healthy people, it is just a bad cold. But there are going to be people who are going to have it.
And that would be a good question for the Health Department. Are they seeing, are they still testing for Delta and Omicron? And are they finding that Delta is being pushed out in the community versus Omicron? They probably would have that information, at least on a statewide.
So from the last, the last update that I heard from Dr. Morris, you know, they don't test for the variants at the local level. That testing happens at the state level. So it's a percentage. I don't know, Willeen, you might be able to describe it better, but it's a percentage of tests that gets sent on.
Mm-hmm.
So last I knew officially, Omicron had not been identified in our area, although it's expected that that is what everyone has right now.
Right.
But, yeah, that's true. You can only do it at a state level because they're not, they don't have the testing facility to test everything individually here. But I think they also pull it out of the sewage system.
They do, yeah.
And they can tell what is predominant there as well. And I have not heard.
There's a delay. I mean, that's one of the things, right? And, but I think what's interesting in our conversation is that a lot of this information, we do not have access to. While it would be fascinating to know the percentage of Omicron versus Delta locally, it would be great to know the percentage of our students vaccinated or those that truly have had it. We don't have this information now. And I think that's one of the reasons I would want to keep the mandate. I feel very much like Amy, that I want students inside classrooms. Like, I want, you know, students in the chairs, in our bodies. We know they learn best. I understand that with a mask is not ideal, but I still would argue it's better than at home. And if that's better than at home and that's how we can get them back, I think that, I mean, it's a big deal. Especially if we don't have these informations. While they would be great, we don't have them. I agree with him. If we knew everybody's vaccinated, that would completely change our masking policy. We don't have this information and we can't ask for it. And so at this point, you know, we're kind of, that's what we have. We have those tools. We know they've worked. They're not perfect. I fully agree with you, it's not ideal. It's far from perfect. But to say they're useless, I can't. Because I think while they have degrees of variations on how useful they may be based on how well-fitted, the kind of mask, how much they touch it, it is still better than nothing. And we all want them in those classrooms away from this virtual learning. We're doing better at it, but we all say it's not ideal.
Well, obviously, we're not going to change. Can we at least table it and bring it back up at the next meeting?
I think we should. I think it's a very valid, we need to have this conversation.
Well, I think we, we need to understand that the kids who are going to come to school that aren't masked are not masking anyplace else either. So they're going to take it home, no matter where they go, because they're not wearing masks outside of school either. The kids who are going to be wearing masks are probably wearing masks outside of school as well. So how much of a difference are you really making that way?
But I do think it's our responsibility. I mean, I kind of agree...
I think it's the parents' responsibility.
Well, but they're in that classroom. And we don't want, you know, outbreaks that we've seen in other communities. We have seemed to really avoid it as far as we could tell up to when things exploded, and then we can't tell anything. It was working.
I was going to say, I don't think it's, we've made it... I don't think anybody's showing any difference not, you know, having it not mandated. I mean, there haven't been really the numbers in any of the other schools that are higher than ours. Or, you know, it's all about equal. So I don't see where you're saying the mask makes a big difference. Because if you look at the numbers, it's not making a big difference.
We can disagree.
Anyplace else. I mean, Claire's still in school, Hill City's still in school.
I don't think we can compare them, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of surrounding areas. But these kids are still in a classroom with approximately the same number of kids. And, you know, the spread's still going to happen. Whether you got, you know, 500 in your school, you're still going to have 20 to 25 in that classroom. And if they're going to wear the mask in school, they're probably wearing it out. Other than that, the kids aren't wearing them outside of the classroom. So they're still bringing it in and out. And they're still going to take it home to their families. So we're not really affecting any real change. Except that, especially for the littles, which is my big push, we're affecting their ability to learn. And that is our job as a school board, is to educate these kids. And I think putting masks on littles is not giving them a good education. And that's... And if you want to find some other way to, you know, put more filters in their classrooms, whatever, I'm all for that. That probably gives you a better protection than the masks do. So if we could at least consider when they come back, something along that line.
But I, I'll get you more information on the filters that are there because I'm not schooled enough to speak intelligently on what filters have...
I knew he did. We had done the CO2s.
But we've updated all the filters, gone through. So not every classroom can have a HEPA filter. We have the highest level of filtration.
But actually, every classroom could because you could actually buy...
An air purifier.
An air purifier. So why don't we do that? Or what would the cost of that be? Or what would the cost of that be?
Yeah, I can, I can get information on the cost.
That would be something that would help forever, not just right now.
And we're discussing how to use some of the care money we received, and so that would be a potential way to, especially for the classrooms that are not equipped with the HEPA filters. I think, I mean, from that perspective, I fully agree with Sheila, we'll never have too much air filtration. And so, if we have some weak spots in that district, let's look at them.
Yeah, I can definitely get information, I don't know that I can have that in place by January thirty first. But I can get the information, and we can talk about costs and that sort of thing.
All right, so we're gonna table that then until February, until the next meeting. So, that brings us to the requested financial reports.
Good evening, I have for you the requested financial reports for the month ending December, comparing 2020 to 2021. This is one of those months where the data's a little bit irrelevant. You did just approve a budget update, but that was in January. And the data we're looking at tonight is for December. So, these figures do not reflect the budget update that you approved at the last meeting. For General Fund, revenue is at twenty percent of budget this year compared to twenty-six percent last year. And expenditures are at forty-one percent of budget this year compared to thirty-eight percent last year. For Special Service Funds, Athletics, as our self-sustaining sports, revenue is at three hundred percent of budget this year compared to zero percent last year. Again, that's budgeting issue that was fixed in January. Expenditures are at twenty percent this year compared to a negative thirteen percent last year. Yes, it's a negative expenditure. There was an overpayment in the previous fiscal year that was finally refunded to us in this fiscal year. So, it, it turned it into the negative. Since these are self-sustaining sports, self-sustaining sports, we would just build a hockey program less this year than we did last year to make up for that refund. For the Children's Learning Center, revenue is at sixty percent of budget both years. And expenditures are at fifty percent of budget this year compared to forty-three percent of budget last year. For the Nurse Testing Program, there is no revenue for either year. Expenditures are at one percent of budget compared to zero percent last year. This is just a fund balance in that program that we're spending down until it's gone. For the Food Service, revenue is at fifty-five percent of budget this year compared to twenty-six percent last year. And expenditures are at forty-one percent of budget compared to thirty-three percent last year. And for the School Store, revenues are at fifty-three percent of budget this year compared to twenty-nine percent last year. And expenditures are at forty-seven percent this year compared to twenty-four percent last year. For our Treasurers Report, on November thirtieth, we had a cash balance of four point five million dollars in our General Fund. We had receipts in the month of December of five point one million, and dispersments of four point four million. That brings us a balance on December thirty first of five point two million dollars. For the Debt Retirement Funds, on November thirtieth, we had one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. For the month of December, there was ninety-six thousand dollars of tax revenue that came in, and no dispersments for December. That brings us a balance on December thirty first of two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And for the Capital Projects Fund, on November thirtieth, we had a cash balance of two point five million dollars, small amount of interest income of thirty dollars, dispersments of four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That brings us a balance on December thirty first of two point one million dollars.
Are there any questions for Ginger? Next, we've received correspondence from the following people. Correspondence has been received by Carlin Borsham Black, Amy Ford, Amy Perschbacher, Steve Swanney, and Jessica Lapp. Next is the citizens' request to address the board. As always, I will call your name up, and you will have your three minutes. And we are starting with Heather Traumer-Beardsley.
My name is Heather Traumer-Beardsley, I'm a citizen in Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant School Board, thank you very much for all the important work that you do. I appreciate the time that you give to this community. We are in the height of the Omicron variant. The schools are now online as a direct result of so many people being ill. The CDC and our local Health Department have provided information about masks. Masks help stop the spread of COVID-19. Cloth masks are better than no masks. N95s or KN94s are better than cloth masks. Safety should not be negotiable. If any changes are gonna be made at this time of high transmission, it should be to require a high-quality mask. In fact, why don't we also give students and staff the choice between vaccination or weekly testing? So, if they're not gonna be vaccinated, weekly testing should be required. Let's please continue to be logical, follow the science, don't negotiate on safety. In doing so, you will never know the number of lives that you have saved, and isn't that okay? Again, thank you for the important work that you do.
Thank you. Next is John Keodini.
Good evening, can you hear me all right? I apologize, what I wrote, I planned to give at a previous meeting, and I showed up here, and you all weren't here, my bad. On November thirtieth, 2021, a mass shooting occurred at Oxford High School. The impact of that tragedy is impossible to quantify. The question that remains is now what? Where do we go from here? Last week, my wife, RJ, shared Facebook posts from Mount Pleasant Moms with me. I'd like to share a few posts with you. We need to do whatever we can to support our schools' teachers and administrators, and keep our kids safe in believing that school is safe. Another mom said, "These poor kids don't need this type of stress, and they sure as hell aren't able to learn in these conditions." Lastly, I didn't send, and I redacted the name, "Today, I'm Scared Too." Nathan Sharansky, the Soviet dissident, he spent nine years in a Soviet prison. And civil rights activist said, "The institutions of family, faith, and community tell us who we are, what we are, where we should turn." Where should we turn? Mount Pleasant is my home, it's a special place. What makes it special? The people who make up our community. It doesn't matter what your political ideology is, your race, your ethnicity, your religion. Our community puts our children first. Parents, grandparents, neighbors, friends are all involved in the upbringing and education of our children. I thank God for the people who invested themselves in the lives of my sons and grandchildren. Last week, students at Oxford Middle School returned for a half-day. In the school parking lot was a sign that read, "You are loved." This reminded me of the lyric from the song "What's Going On," written by Marvin Gaye. You know, I grew up in Detroit. Quote, "You know we've got to find a way to bring some love in here today. You know, we've got to find a way to bring some understanding here today, for only love can conquer hate." If I have a few minutes, do you have a minute, some time left, Tim?
About thirty seconds.
Well, bless you, okay. So, some quotes from Dr. King's speech on August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three. "Now is the time to lift our nation from the quicksand of racial injustice to the solid rock of brotherhood. Now is the time to make justice a reality for all of God's children. Let us not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup of bitterness and hatred. We can never be satisfied as long as our children are stripped of their selfhood and robbed of their dignity by signs stating 'for whites only.' I have a dream that one day this nation will live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream that one day in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers. I hope and pray, let me, one more. I have a dream that one day the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh will be able to see it together. I hope and pray that Dr. King's beliefs are still being read and discussed in Mount Pleasant public schools." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Fountain.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fountain, from here, obviously. The board is supposed to be bipartisan, which means you must keep your personal beliefs and opinions aside and listen to both sides of every issue. I've noticed a lot of personal opinions being used while making decisions like masks and policy. While you're, while, while you are for mandates in certain subjects, you must put aside and do what's best for the students, and keep true, true to the reason why they go to school in the first place. They are here for education only. According to Section 11A of the Revised School Board, it's only for the safety and welfare of students, never said anything about the health. It's kind of weird that you have the strongest mask policy, but you're the first ones to close. So, with that being said, according to the Michigan School and Masking School Board, the masking resolution failed. So, why are we still masking? Recommendations are not law, so is the masking policy or, and not a temporary emergency procedure? Which means, is, is the masking is going to be permanent forever? Or is it just a temporary measure until the virus goes away, or we adapt to it? Also, I just wanted to understand that we are going into our third year of this virus. Our children's education is the only job of our schools. We need to get back to educating them, and not keeping them in a yo-yo education of school face-to-face for one week, and then online the next. It is totally unfair to keep this going. The more that this drags on, the dropout rate will go up, I guarantee it. If you feel your child wants to wear a mask or test every day to go to school, then they should be able to do that if they would like, it's parents' choice. And not mandated for, I just believe that it shouldn't be mandated for testing and things like that. I agree with the, using the forty-five million dollar bond to upgrade all air filtration systems to keep them from viruses and allergies also. There's other things that people get sick with. And why can't we implement like the restaurant rules for our children, where if you want them to wear a mask in the halls, let them wear a mask, once they're in their classrooms, they can sit down, take their mask off, and relax. If you have air filtration set, it won't matter, it'll, it'll work just fine. Also, if, I also support an opt-out curriculum for students who choose to opt out of classes or discussions that are not on the curriculum, and parents have different views on subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bree Mogamer. Bree Mogamer?
Hey there, Bree from Mount Pleasant. Dan here has something to give Amy, and something to give Jennifer, and I'm hoping that you can share that with everybody. You all received an email from me that had a lot of information in it. Number one, about the masking, and why the masking needs to be removed. In that email, it also included information that came from the judge's opinion with the iron pig in the lawsuit that had taken place in regards to MCL 333.2253. That was the Michigan compiled law that gave the Public Health Code, the Director of the Health Department, the ability to promulgate rules and gatherings and make the restrictions. And that was ruled unconstitutional, and it was severed, it was severed, it was severed, severed, it was severed from the Public Health Code. So, with that said, I want to go on and remind you that there are a school board election notice and goals that this school board has. And the Mount Pleasant Board of Education represents the community, the community, the community, in setting policy for the school district. Board members will pursue the following goals. Establishing priorities that will ensure the long-term sustainability of the district's educational program. Establishing the means for regularly obtaining representative, representative feedback from staff, students, parents, and other members of the community. Enhancing the Board of Education competence through a program of continuous learning, and serving the community by continuing to model effective leadership and professionalism. And your vision is to create an inclusive, I'm going to say that two more times, inclusive, an inclusive, inclusive school community of engaged, inspired, and empowered learners. So, here's my perspective that you'll find, that is not just mine, but that of many other parents and community members. Conservatives, conservatives, and Christians are being discriminated against by this board when our religious beliefs and creed are excluded, when we are excluded. In seeking a solution to this problem, we had discussed, when Dawn and I had met with three board members, the opt-out, the idea where teachers are going to be held responsible to share the curriculum that is being taught. Because our creed and our religion has certain things in the curriculum that is being taught here in lesson plans that we don't agree with. And you're not gonna change our beliefs, we're not going to change yours. But what we want to see is that anything that's being taught and instructed by a teacher, that includes diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional learning, gender and sexual discussions and promotions, religion, suicide, political promotion, those are just a few things that we would like to see as parents, as community members, because of our creed and our religion. And we don't want to be discriminated against, that we want to know that those things are being instructed to our children. And in knowing that transparently, we want to have our students be offered alternative curriculum. And back to the masking, I appreciate the fact that you're going to review that again. You were sent some very serious information in regards to that masking, and there are laws that are coming down and changing. And I ask you again that you think seriously on reviewing the masking policy. Because when a student is exempt from wearing a mask, such as my child, myself, and my student that now attends Beale City, when we sit in a banquet hall, and we are the only ones not wearing a mask-
Please wrap up your comment.
Thanks, Tim, this is my last comment. When we sit in a banquet hall, and we're the only ones not wearing a mask, do you know what everyone knows about us? We have a medical condition and a reason for not wearing that mask, and I don't much so appreciate everybody knowing that. So, I really would like you to think strongly on that when you reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erin Williams.
Tough act to follow, tough act to follow. My name's Erin Williams. I prepared some things to say, but instead, I'll just speak. My son goes to Gander Elementary. We switched to Mount Pleasant schools in the eleventh hour. I felt, as a parent, I did not have a choice, any other district. Every other district was looking at COVID-19 as if it was nothing. They weren't masking, no distancing, in the cafeteria together. Don't get me wrong, I would love a world where my five-year-old can start school in a normal way. Everybody does, right? Nobody really wants to be here, nobody really wants to do this. However, it's our reality. So, anyway, my five-year-old, thank goodness, was able to start in Mount Pleasant. It was the only safe option for my family. Thank you for giving us a choice to send him somewhere where I don't feel like I literally can't walk him to the door. Because I don't know who is there, what they've been doing, and there's no layered protection. So, thank you for the layered protection. A couple of things, too. I think masking for our family has brought up a few good points for Neil going through his life. Number one is patriotism. Number one is patriotism. Right now is our patriotic duty to do what we can for our country. What we can do for our country right now is try to keep each other safe. It also teaches him empathy. Empathy for your fellow person. You may not know them, but you can be empathetic to their attitude, you can be empathetic to their personal being. Empathy, keeping them safe, knowing that you may not know them, but you're helping them. Also, we are talking about religion, right? It's great. Love thy neighbor. By loving thy neighbor, you can put your mask on. Love thy neighbor, keep your neighbor safe, right? I think that's incredibly important. So masking for Neil is teaching him patriotism, empathy, love thy neighbor. Also, personally, I love the information that I get from Mount Pleasant. I feel like a very informed parent. I know how many cases are in what schools. My friends who have young children in neighboring schools, COVID is like some secret whisper that's happening amongst the schools, but parents don't actually know. How many cases are in there? How many cases in high school, middle school, elementary? Nobody knows. They're only told if they're a three-foot close contact. So they're hearing secondhand through parents. That is not being an informed parent. Mount Pleasant Schools are keeping me, an informed parent, to know, if there are too many cases at Gannier and I don't want to send Neil that day, I can make that decision because I have the information. Knowledge is power, and you're giving me that power. I also want to say, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with anyone on the board, but the only unmasked person here said, "Our concern is our students." Totally get it, love it, right? But our students don't live at school. Our students then go home, and then those homes go to workplaces, and those workplaces affect other people. I think it's a very odd conservative notion that we live on an island alone, that you live by just yourself, that no one else is affected by your choices. My choice as a parent to teach Neil to brush his teeth two times away, day, is my choice, and it affects no one else except for Neil. My choice as a parent to not vaccinate my kid and not wear a mask in public and spread anything he may have affects other people. It is a communicable disease.
You have three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rendero Martinez. I apologize if I mispronounced the first name.
Thank you for the time. My name is Fidencio Martinez. I'm a parent of a student here at Mount Pleasant High School. And according to the tenants of CRT, whites are inherently racist and oppressors. That is an interesting concept to examine because that is something that the school teaches. It's not a matter of if racism or oppressive actions happen, it is when and how did it happen? We got to look for those microaggressions. We have to look at each other's skin color. Goes against everything that Dr. Martin Luther King wanted. I find it interesting that here in Mount Pleasant, we have 85% Anglo-Saxon and 14 and a little bit of change of minority groups, yet this school board claims to represent and be a fair representative of our community, and what I see before me is a group of entirely, visually at least, Caucasian Anglo-Saxon descent. Where we, in the beginning of the school board meeting, speak and honor the natives that are here, but I don't see any represented here. I don't see any blacks or Latinos or Asians or any other browns represented here. And if we, if we look at the tenants that you teach, then there needs to be a change. Some way, somehow, you're oppressing me. Some way, somehow, you're racist against me by the very same tenants that you teach. And this isn't, and I look at this, this isn't a fair representative. So therefore, let us practice what CRT teaches, and let's have affirmative action. And that means, according to the number of representatives here, that at least one of you should remove yourself, and we do affirmative action and try to get some opposing viewpoint or the other side, which when I calculate, I'm looking, I see a high number of Caucasian females, which by listening to your rhetoric and, and opinions are left-leaning and progressives. So I propose that one of you, madams, remove yourself, and let's insert through affirmative action, a conservative male minority to help counter this. Now, I know that sounds a little bit ridiculous, doesn't it? It's kind of oxymoronic, and I know that's not going to happen, but that's the very same types of tenants that you want to teach our students. And this is what I can tell you, as a minority male, I don't like to be told what to do. Oppressors tell people what to do. Oppressors make mandates. I don't want you to tell me what to do. Yes, love thy neighbor, and the rest of that says, "Do unto them as you would want done unto yourself." And what I do, I take a whole lot of vitamins. I work out, I wash my hands. I'll give you all the vitamins you need. Because that's what I do to myself. Let's not cherry pick the science, let's not cherry pick the things that align with our political ideologies, but let's have a fair representation of all the families.
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
And I'll end with this. Minority families are traditionally, hold traditional family values, and that is what I want to see here. It's my kids, not yours. I'll make the decision, just give me the information. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to also ask that everybody, please keep quiet during the time that the participants are actually doing their speaking. Next is Linda Richardson.
I'm Linda Richardson, and I'm from Mount Pleasant. It's going to sound like I'm jumping around because a lot of this covers a lot of what you said, a lot of what they said. The schools are getting money for the mandates slash COVID precautions. We would like a full audit of what the money is going for, that our taxpayer money. With the students in and out of school all the time, one, how can you keep track of this money? And two, how are you really teaching them? You say you're concerned with their learning, their education, but are you? Because how can they really learn virtually? Especially when you say that teachers' children are allowed to come into school? Really? You also stated in a memo on 111, possibly, I don't quite have the date, that one Chromebook per family was allowed? That's 1,400 Chromebooks you just said? You have over 3,000 students? You're virtual. So what student in what family isn't worth learning? You got COVID money for those Chromebooks. Why can't every student have one? Because not all students are worth it? What? Explain this to me, please. You also are confusing safety, which is your job for the students that are here, but yet you don't have locks on the door when there is emergency in this room. You have children holding ropes. Because is their safety really that important? That's your job? Let us parents take care of their health? That's our job? Leave your business where it belongs? Again, would you really just like to keep this COVID alive with these masks? Because there's things you can do, or are you just getting extra money to keep it going? The filters are a great idea. Why weren't they already done? You probably got over $5 million just in COVID money, but we don't know that because you are not transparent with us. It's not the first time we've asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Batzer.
Three minutes is a long time sometimes, isn't it? I have so many things I want to say to you all, but instead I'm going to speak very slowly. Take the full three minutes and not put anything else on your shoulders tonight. I have been grateful to be present in these conversations. I have been thankful that I have been able to watch your professionalism time and time again. I am beyond grateful, as some parents have said tonight, that my children are in this district and that you have followed the science, that you talk to each other even when your opinions are different, and you work to come to common ground and listen to each other. And ultimately, it is very clear to myself, although you wouldn't know what, that everyone agrees with me, you would know that not everyone agrees with me, but it's clear to me that you actually have the best interests of our students at heart. Even when you disagree with each other, you are respectful, you are kind, you listen, and you always bring the conversation back to what serves not only the students in our schools, but the community at large. And for that, I am super grateful. And so I want to take, I don't know how much time I have left, the rest of this time and just say thank you, and that you're seen, and you're heard, mask or no mask, and that you will continue to be seen and heard by many people in this community that aren't as boisterous or loud at times. And I just want to thank you. We've had a lot of clapping, we've had a lot of cheering, we've had a lot of, I don't even know. And so I want to clap for you all, and I want to cheer for you all. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. And even in this heated environment that is the worst of all sides, we, none of us want to be here, we've heard this tonight, right? None of us want to be here. I'm grateful for you, and you are making the right decisions. And I'm thankful that you are strong enough and work together enough to make the right decisions. And I'm going to stand here till my three minutes is up, so you don't have to worry about anything else. Thank you all so, so much.
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Laura Gorley.
I live at 615 East Wisconsin, and I'm here to concede my time to Danny McQuarters.
Hello, my name is Danny McQuarters. I live here in Mount Pleasant, a citizen and a member on the Human Rights Committee of Isabella County. And I just wanted to echo the last speaker's statements. I do appreciate that everyone in here, regardless of opinions or anything, at the heart of it, is all, you know, for the kids and for the youth and for our community, what we all have. I just wanted to address some of the things that I've heard tonight, and once again, I don't want to, you know, I understand that it's part of, specifically on the critical race theory, of course, the only black building here comes up to talk about that. But one thing that I wanted to get across is that I am a graduate of Central Michigan University, where I finished my master's degree, and a large part of my master's thesis was critical race theory, and I can guarantee that elementary students are not learning that. It is very dense, it is very complicated material in a lot of ways, it is, and I challenge somebody to say specifically what teacher, what classroom, and what syllabus someone is teaching, and what are they teaching? I would be upset, too, if I heard that anybody of any race were telling someone that they are inherently, you know, a bad person. That's not good, that's not the point that I'm disagreeing with. I'm disagreeing with the premise that these things are being taught to begin with. If it really is that big of a thing, maybe we need an audit in the classrooms to see what people are teaching, but these types of materials are often, I notice a lot in the media, especially, you know, talk show and radio host, they talk about it, but they're talking about either black history or just political differences. They are not talking about critical race theory, which is a large set of laws and systematic, you know, histories that come with that and intersect at a lot of different points. There is a lot of, critical race theory is not even one theory. There are literally countless scholars in the field with so many other sub-theories under there. Talking about mortgage prices in relation to different races, for example, is not being talked about in the classroom. APR rates for different races and comparing them with systematic laws. Talking about the laws from the 70s where it barred certain, or which allowed landowners to raise interest rates for Black and Latino people, and talking about those specific laws, which are really, really dense, and learning the Supreme Court cases behind them, are probably not being taught in the curriculum. And if I'm wrong, then please let me know on the stage. But I would just like to say that I understand why someone would be worried if they keep hearing it over and over again from the media. And regardless of your political opinion, fact-check your media, look into it yourself, see what has been said and why. Ask your kids, what are they teaching you, when, who said it? If they can come up with a specific thing, then that's when I think we should be able to talk about it here. If not, I think that it is used as a piece of division for the rest of us, when we all want the same thing at the end of the day, to be safe in our community and allow our students to grow and foster a sense of community. So I would just like to say that critical race theory is not being taught at the grade level, not even in high school. If it is, they're not getting much from it because it's so dense. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is the end of the citizens' request to address the board. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Consent items are the approval of the January 3, 2022 organizational meeting, the approval of the minutes for January 3, 2022 regular meeting, and the financial approval in the form of, approval of bills in the form of $1,460,820.28.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And those pass. Thank you so much. Next comes to the summer tax levy resolution.
Good evening. You have a resolution in your board packet, asking to levy half of our taxes in the city of Mount Pleasant only, in the summer and half in the winter. In order to levy summer taxes, we have to pass this resolution, and again, we only levy summer taxes in the city of Mount Pleasant, and we only levy half of our taxes in the summer in the city of Mount Pleasant. The other half is levied in the winter. All other townships in our area are levied 100% in the winter. This resolution would allow us to levy this summer, 50% of the summer taxes in the city of Mount Pleasant only.
We've done this for many years, correct?
This is going to be a roll call vote, but before that, is there a motion to accept levying the taxes in the summer and the winter, so the 50%? So moved. Seconded. Okay, so roll call vote. Courtney Segman, yes. Jessica Dernigan.
Yes.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Leanne Pengel.
Yes.
Kim Oetker.
Yes.
And that passes. Next is resignation.
Good evening. In your memo, in your packet, please find the resignation memo from Kyle Ash.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Kyle Ash?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And that passes. Next is the Board of Education discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss any issues or concerns that they may have. Is there anything in addition to what we've already discussed tonight that anyone would like to add or say?
I have a, just a question. I know we're virtual, but the virtual isn't just because people are sick, it's also because so many were in quarantine, correct? So it wasn't all staff and students being sick, but a lot of it was staff and students being in quarantine.
So it's, it's attendance-based, we have to have 75% of our students.
So it's, it's attendance-based, we have to have seventy-five percent of our students in person in order for the day to count. We are not quarantining students and staff members like we've done in previous years. There are many mitigating factors to quarantine. First and foremost, because we're all properly masked all day, every day, we do not have to quarantine. If you're vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. So I don't know that our buildings came close to not making seventy-five percent solely because of COVID cases. I mean, we know we've got strep throat going around, we've got a lot of illness going around. What I know is that our attendance was not good, and we were getting to the point where I was concerned that we were not going to meet seventy-five percent. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I would just like to thank Jen and obviously Tindre and Linda for everything that you guys have done in the past couple weeks. I know it's some challenging days, so I know you're not out of the woods yet with all that, but thank you for everything.
I agree, I think it's a really challenging time for everyone. It's challenging, a home is challenging here. I mean, there's, there's a lot of conflicts, and the fact that we can come together and discuss this is great. I want to thank all your hard work. I know that it's been really heavy for you guys, and so we appreciate all that you do.
I'd also like to mention that I'd like to thank our community partners in all of this, Central Michigan University, who's given some time and flexible skeletons, the tribe who's opened up tutoring and school support for their students, and the families themselves. Everyone has stepped up, it's very impressive, and I would like to thank everyone for doing that. It's quite phenomenal what our community did in a very short time to protect our children and to support our families and our community. And I'd like to thank the businesses, university, the hospitals, the list goes on and on, for being flexible and supporting us in this decision that we had to do, because we know it affects everyone in this community, it affects our economy, it affects everything. So I know the decision was not taken lightly, and so I would like to thank those who had it up to their eyebrows in making the decision and stepping forward, and the way that you communicated it, I think was extremely helpful to everyone. Thank you.
Is there anything else anyone would like to add? At this time, then I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.